The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock, so I welcome you to our February 2nd, 2019 Bristol Education Meeting. I'd ask that you all rise for the National Anthem. And after the National Anthem is sung, we will also be doing a pledge. And we are pleased and honored to have with us this evening Morgan Greger, who's a senior at BCHS.
Oh, say can you see by the dawning light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's roar, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much for sharing your gift with us. Now we're going to do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation under our umbrella, in the name of this law, liberty, and justice for all. At this moment, I would like us to take a moment of silence for Peter Blum, who was an English teacher at BCHS from 1974 to 2009. Our next item on the agenda is staff and student recognition. And I believe Mrs. Culkin will present.
Thank you very much. Good evening, commissioners. It's a privilege for me to be able to share with you that under the guidance of two of our teachers at Bristol Eastern, Paul Philopon and Bill Kelly, approximately 10 of our students were invited to participate and present in an annual event at the State Department of Education, their annual Back to School Special Education Bureau Conference, which is comprised of an audience of over approximately 500 directors and administrators of special education. So our students from our Possibilities Theater were invited to take stage under their guidance. While the students were not able to be present today with us, to give you a little clip of their performance, both Mr. Kelly and Mr. Philopon are with us today. Mr. Philopon would like to say a few words to himself, and then I'm going to share with you a brief, it's about two and a half minutes long, clip of what that performance was on the 18th of September, so you can have an idea. It's not the best video recording, I will apologize for that. There's a good elbow in the screen, but I think there's enough to get a sense of what our students, who had such great energy and were so excited to be there, provided to set the tone for a very important State Department of Education meeting. So I will ask Mr. Philopon to come to the microphone, and then I'll play that clip for you, if you all enjoy hearing that, because you're very proud of our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The reason why I want to speak is oftentimes when you're doing something that I think represents how a lot of us feel, you really want to get it out there. And my daughter went to Conner High School the best four years, the best experience she had here in the four years that she was a volunteer as a part of their Unified Theater. It's a three-night, sold-out auditorium event, and that's where, you know, her feedback, friends of mine that still work there, administrators, say it's the best night they have. So a few years ago, I was just talking about, you know, can we get that going here? I am, you know, there are many areas I'm not good, and theater's one of them. And someone said to me, go talk to Bill Kelly. So I went to Bill Kelly, and I said, listen, if we can get together kids that are a wide variety of learning and a wide variety of skills, and actually, instead of just talking about how we all believe in it, and give them an opportunity to practice together, learn each other, say hello, or wave at each other in the hallway, and then put on a presentation, what could be better? So of course, being what he is, he's like, let's do it. So we rehearsed, and we had this amazing show, which a lot of you saw two years ago, where we filled up our auditorium, and the kids were like silly, crazy, and thrilled. Last year, we weren't able to get it to come to fruition, we didn't have the same kind of student leadership. We were pretty aggressive this year in making sure that we sought out the right people. I asked you with the guidance, instead of I'm begging you to give me kind of an old soul. We had two great girls, we wanted one more, we wanted a boy as a part of it. So if it's possible to make this short, what came about was we had kids who would never have a chance to bump into other kids, all get together and rehearse, and practice, and laugh, and have fun. So when we got a chance to go do this presentation, they were just beside themselves with how warm the reception was and how beautiful it was, and then we went out to eat at a diner, and everyone at the diner was so great to us, and, you know, we had a kid have happy birthday something with ice cream, and it was just feel-good from beginning to end. And the first Thursday in June is our presentation this year. So this is, this is my pitch, to get four or five people, or whomever, and come out and sit in the auditorium, because these kids don't always have an opportunity to do something where they feel like they're getting loved and appreciated. And that's what we're going to do this year. So thank you very much for this, and I hope we can, you know, have this, have some legs, and just build this thing to something better. So thank you.
You can't tell you're a football coach, right?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. That's great, I love it.
Emergency. Come on. Come on! Alright, so, I just wanted to bring brought sparts, so I have these parts, and they're in specific order, and I'm going to get them out, but...
Oh, oh, wait a minute!
Let's see, around here, here, and...
Oh!
Let's see, um...
Hold on, she's trying to come on, but I actually didn't hear her speak.
Oh, I hate ice cream!
This is her non-core, it wasn't my turn. So, she was talking to school.
Yeah, the summer's almost over, for sure, I tried to speak, they won't, they won't hear too.
She's all molly.
She's all molly.
What?
They're not for cars, they're not for people.
You have some C.O. in your teeth.
Thanks, I should probably... Run more?
Suddenly, there are little gears.
Ah!
I'm going to come in here.
What is happening?
Everyone's so scared from the earth, it's like it's drawing me in.
Lost!
So that was just a brief snippet of our students who did get the, I think you had the standing ovation. It was quite a full house and a good round of applause, but thank you both so much for what you put into that in the beginning of the school year, getting everything up and running, and you were there and ready for September 18th, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go from something really exciting to the more mundane approval of amendments. You all received our amendments package from our last month's meeting, and so if there were corrections or additions, we can take them now. If not, I would accept a motion for approvals.
So...
The motions are properly made and a second.
Second.
That's the motions are properly made and second. I hear no questions or comments or additions or deletions, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And abstentions. Aye abstaining, and Commissioner Caddell abstaining. So that motion was approved, we move on to committee reports. And we'll start off with Mr. O'Brien first, with the personnel committee.
Personnel committee met to negotiate with VATS, and we have reached a tentative agreement, which is currently being drafted, and it's my hope they will vote on it this month, and we will vote on it next month, but successful negotiation. Although there wasn't a group hug either.
Well, we'll always get a chance to do that group hug later. We'll move on to operations committee, you report this month.
Very briefly, there's an item later in the agenda that we're going to vote on, accepting maybe specs for putting photovoltaic panels in Stafford's school as we replace the roof.
Awesome. Okay, well, there is no student achievement report this month, because we preempted them to have a retreat, so we appreciated them being so flexible, we move on to policy committee, Commissioner Dapp.
Yeah, we actually do. On our last policy committee meeting, we had four policy revisions and two new policies to discuss, and I'll ask Dr. Dieter to shed a little light with those.
And this is an agenda I know for later on in the agenda, so we will circle back to it at that point. Okay. We'll move on to communications and community relations, Commissioner Caddell.
We met on September 30th, and we had a couple of items on the agenda. The first was to discuss the liaison report, and we had a nice open discussion about that, and for the rest of the commissioners here, we didn't take any action, but I think moving forward with the new board, Dr. Carbone had a very good idea to look forward to making this a little bit more organized, and making sure that we report on schools in groups of, let's say, K through five, the middle schools and the high schools. So we didn't feel like we should make any decisions on that, as we will be having a new board next time around. The second major topic of the night was the communications plan, which I think everybody has in front of them, so that's good, you can take a look at this. I won't spend too much time on this, but Dr. Carbone has done a good job to look at the different goals and strategies to improve our communications with the community within the board, and I think one of the other things that we talked about too, we did at last, was the norms, and we're going to hear more about that tonight, I'm sure, too. So that's what we talked about at the communications meeting.
Okay, and finally, the finance committee, Commissioner River.
Thank you very much, Chairman Wilson. The finance committee met twice, first on September 16th, and then again this evening, right before we came downstairs. On September 16th, we had an update of the budget, a snapshot of August 31st for this school year. There's really not that much to report yet, as we are still early in the school year. I can tell you a couple of things. Operation of plant, operations and maintenance of plant has money available for repairs, maintenance, and supplies as required for the year. Technology, several computer leases will renew during the school year, and money's a reserve for equipment in classroom projectors, phone books, and charging carts. You know, there's not really much to say about transportation yet, the contract has not yet been encumbered, a lot of the line items are not yet encumbered, but they will be shortly. We did have one item as far as cafeteria, we did receive notification from the review official regarding the administrative review appeal, and the action taken by the State Department of Education was upheld in all areas of that appeal. Then moving on to this evening's meeting, we had talked on the 16th about whether or not to renew our membership with CADE, and we then postponed that discussion and a vote for the meeting tonight, and instead of voting on it, the transfer upstairs in finance, we decided to bring it down here, so that the full board could discuss and vote on it. So I would ask to add an agenda item in that regard.
Okay, so you're voting on not the agenda item, or just the, just putting an item on the agenda?
Right.
I will second it.
Okay, motions are properly made and seconded, and agenda item, any discussion, hopefully you can't have discussion on that, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, so we will take that up under new business. Okay, we'll move on to the chairman's report. I want to thank Commissioner River, who filled in for me in my absence last month. I appreciate it, I had some traveling plans that were unexpected, so I appreciate her filling in for me. I understand that she was extremely efficient.
Yeah, you've got 20 minutes left to meet it.
And I looked at the minutes, and she conducted the meeting in 33 minutes, and so I will tell you, I appreciate she did that, but I don't accept the challenge, and I never think that a quick meeting is the best meeting, although it probably is, but I'll never accept, I'll never beat that challenge, so, but I appreciate her filling in for me. At a retreat, and I don't really want to talk too much about the retreat, because I want to leave that to our superintendent, because she has more on that later in the agenda, but the board did adopt some norms, and I would like to read those norms to you all, and our intent is to read them at each meeting as we start, and we're going to, each meeting, pick someone on the board, it'll vary each month as to who's going to be the norm keeper. And this evening, it's going to be Mr. Patton is going to be our norm keeper, so we're going to check with him at the end of the meeting and find out if we in fact did, you know, stick to our norms. So here are the norms that we adopted unanimously at the meeting. All participants have equal voice and airtime is shared. Assume positive intentions. Be honest and open to cultivate trust. Respect and honor diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives. Focus on ideas, practices, and the work, not people. So Mr. Patton, I want you to check on us tonight, see how we make out, and make sure that we abide by those norms that we all agreed to. Our next, my next topic is Bristol Education Foundation. I suspect maybe you're tired of hearing me, I think I've spoken about it three or four months in a row, but it really is, the Bristol Education Foundation is a foundation that primarily supports the mini-grants that our teachers applied to and receive in January, and it's Bristol Education Foundation's signature fundraising event, and it's our most important event. It's coming up on the 18th of this month, 6 to 10 at the Doubletree, and it's not too late to put a team together. I encourage you to challenge your friends and compete. You can sign up, there's a link on the Bristol Education website, if you Google Bristol Education Foundation, there's a link under the events tab, and you can sign up there, and I think you probably could even sign up with Susan Everett if you had to, if you can't use the technology, but I presume you all can, as technological teachers and people in the education community, but if not, you need to go to Susan Everett, you can. We think it'll be a great night of fun, we have some raffles, we have some 50-50 raffle, we have some gift baskets, and it's a lot of good-natured fun, and it goes for a great cause. The foundation gives out about $15,000 worth of grants to teachers on sort of mini-grant basis, somewhere between $500 and $1,000 each year, something a little less, something a little more, but they're great ideas, they're incubators for some of the programs that we may use in the future, and some of them are just like nice and fit, nice to have, things that we cannot provide in our budget, but a teacher or someone in the classroom would like to have. So we really hope you'll get behind this effort and sign up, so it's two Fridays from this Friday evening, there's no football game, I believe, that night, that's probably not now, because of EE, but we won't have one, but anyways, I hope you all can make that event, put together your teams, wherever your circle of influence is, who your friends are, get them together, drag them down there, it's only $35, and it'll be a fun time. And so that concludes my report, and we'll move on to the students. We have a circle there who's presenting. Okay, Bristol Central, I think you'll go up first, because you're closest to the alphabet, and Madison is our junior, and she will be presenting for us this evening. Well, it might be just going to be your first report, right?
Yeah.
So we're a very friendly group, so just knock it out.
I am pleased to report that our first month at Bristol Central was a success, thanks to the hard work from our teachers, students, and staff to implement some new changes. Such changes include daily rambly, morning breakfast, and free lunches. Rambly takes place after first period, where students meet in their previously known advisory rooms, and discuss upcoming events, goals, and whatever each teacher decides to contribute. This month, we were able to cover the five emergency situations and the four B.C. statements during the extended periods. Welcome back assemblies were called on September 9th for freshmen and juniors, and the 10th for sophomores and seniors, in which Mr. Winder talked to the students about what to expect during the school year. In the classroom, teachers have taken the time to address classroom norms and objectives, of which have been posted around the room. I'd like to give a special thanks to athletic director Chris Case, who approved the funding for the girls swim and dive team's new competition suits. Last Friday, varsity football game at Massacre was broadcasted live on the NFHS Network. Important dates coming up include the PSAT on the 16th of October, which will be a half day, and non-senior pictures will be taken in English classes on October 7th and 8th. Parent-teacher conferences will be held on October 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Any questions?
Thank you very much. And for Bristol Eastern, we have Drew Duffney presenting for us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drew Duffney, I'm the senior representative for the board event from Eastern, and I'm going to be sharing a general summary of the events that occurred, and will be occurring as we wrap the first month of the year, or of the school. First off, we had an amazingly successful first-day meeting at school, that went very smoothly. Many students were excited to see their friends and teachers again, and were happy to start another exciting year of school with new classes, teachers, and administrators, in a more positive and comfortable atmosphere. A few days in, our school held class meetings and assemblies for each grade to kick off the new school year, and introduce a new administration. During each meeting, school expectations and requirements for the year were discussed, such as the school upholding the cell phone policy, where students are required to away their cell phones to ease decreased distraction and increase learning. In terms of athletics, we began the fall season with seven active sports, including girls' and boys' soccer, girls' and boys' cross-country, girls' swim and dive, football and volleyball. Some of the highlights so far of our teams have an undefeated boys' varsity soccer and girls' varsity volleyball team, which are currently ranked second and third in the class level respectively, and the varsity football team, which picked up its first win since 2017 this past Saturday. Along with sports, there's been much involvement throughout the school within the 36 or so clubs that have resumed their actions. Some of the clubs include Friends Rachel, Shoe Council, Anime Club, Project Rages, Model U.N., STEM Forensics Club, and Yearbook Committee. Bristol Eastern just had a club fair, which took place this afternoon, during all lunches in the courtyard, where students could inquire about some of the numerous clubs that we have to offer. Additionally, a leadership council has partnered with United Way to hold a shoe drive, where students can donate new or used shoes that will be sent to the club. On October 16th, we have PSAT Day as well, and every day can play during the day for grades nine through 11, while seniors can have a senior exploration day. As underclassmen are taking the practice test, this time will be used for senior students to shoot to visit college, or come into school for some of the college workshops available, like resume writing and financial aid scholarship. Furthermore, we recently held the College and Career Fair at BE on September 24th, that attracted over 450 people, where about 104 representatives from colleges showed up to explain their college career. Some of the colleges present were UConn, King, Roger Williams, Quest, New England, as well as the US Army Navy. Eastern also held a senior planning information night earlier in the week, on the 17th, organized by the guidance department. Lastly, last Saturday, BE also had great turnout at the Home Point Dance, for all grades which were sold out, and organized by student council, with the theme being the school colors, white, gray, and blue. So far, Bristol Eastern has been off to a productive, enthusiastic start, which I'm sure will be the case for the remainder of the year. Thank you very much for aligning me to speak on behalf of the school.
I did want you to just put an event on your calendar, as some of the students and passengers have gone to the CADE convention, they have a special session on Saturday mornings, November 16th would be the date, so if you can hold that in your calendar, there may be an opportunity for you to go to that convention, you meet other students your age who are on their student representatives, and when you talk about topical ideas, as well as meet together, so if you're able, it'd be a great opportunity. To the superintendent's report, she is in the podium, she'll bring it to us.
Good evening. June Morton, great job, Madison and Drew, your first presentation, you know, it was a little nerve-wracking, nice work. And I want to thank our representatives from Bristol Eastern, cheering our students' talents, as well as your dedication to our students, so thank you so much for going this evening. I'm going to highlight two items this evening. The first item is just a review for the board of commissioners participating in the retreat, for the general public, on why the retreat is important. The retreat allowed for me to work with the Board of Education, to create our governance, and to reaffirm and recommit to some of the norms, the mission statement, goals, and direction that the board would like me, as a superintendent, to continue in their pursuit for academic excellence. We discussed and reaffirmed that the Board of Education mission statement, teach and learn with passion and purpose, is important to the commissioners, as well as our aspirations for both our adults and the students that get to have every day the opportunity to learn with our teachers. We reaffirmed the mission statement. We also revisited the Board of Education goals, and we have been speaking about the goals, and on a monthly basis, I report on the district priorities. Our district priorities relate directly to the Board of Education goals that has been charged, for me and our leadership team, to ensure that together, we secure the necessary funding for public community partnerships, hire highly qualified and diverse staff, narrow the achievement gap, and provide a safe learning environment. Specifically aligned to the Board of Education goals, the district priorities that we will continue to work on and work forward in the next three years include increasing and improving our community and parent engagement, cultivating talent, operational and organizational effectiveness, and tonight, Mrs. Fortin will speak on one of the attributes highlighting how we are learner-focused, and that we are highlighted at the State Department of Education for promising practice. Earlier, Chairman Wilson shared about how we adopted meeting norms, not only for our Board of Education meetings, but all of our subcommittee meetings, and Fisher Patton is going to be the norm keeper this evening. It is the board and the governance team modeling our norms and our behavior within meeting structures, because if we expect our teachers and our students to model the norms, and our administrative teams modeling norms in all of their meetings, then therefore, for the public, we need to demonstrate the same level of debate, healthy debate, conversation, and grappling with what we have been charged with, improving the educational process for all. I won't highlight the norms again, but this evening, the idea of being the norm keeper is Commissioner Patton would be allowed to pick one norm in particular that you would like the 10 of us to focus on, so I am going to ask... So I am going to ask that you pick one meeting norm this evening that you would like the rest of us to really hyper-focus on, and that's the one you're going to report out on.
Focus on ideas, practices, and work, not people.
So, we are charged with focusing on the ideas, practices, and working with the people, so our discussions will hopefully model that. And then at the end of the evening, you'll let us know how we do. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Forten, who will highlight one of our promising practices.
Good evening, commissioners. So I do have the exciting news to share. I thought I was going to be the first one to tell you, but Dr. Carbone. That we were recently recognized at the state level as a district with innovative practice leading to improved student success. The Connecticut State Department of Education recently launched its new Learn Together, Grow Together initiative, developed to highlight districts who are addressing common issues through innovative approaches, ideas, and strategies, leading to successful outcomes for students. The initiative is part of Commissioner Cardenas's major points of focus to leverage the collective capacity of learning districts across the state. Learn Together, Grow Together is a social media campaign and a dedicated page on the Connecticut State Department of Education website. I'm proud to share with you that Bristol was one of four districts who were selected by the State Department of Education to be featured in the first installment. You may recall, last spring, I had the privilege of sharing with you our increased district success at preparing students to graduate from our schools college and career-ready based on their enrollment in college and career-based courses and achievement on the SAT and advanced placement test. And I could almost wager that you probably don't remember the data that I shared with you, but that you will recall our avid students sharing with you how their involvement in AVID bolstered their willingness to take and succeed in our most rigorous courses. AVID and the strong commitment and support from the Board of Education were two of the four district strategies that Dr. Carbone highlighted when asked about our district's success in preparing students who are college and career-ready. Additionally, Dr. Carbone highlighted our commitment to expanding community and academic partnerships, such as those with UConn and TMSIS, and provided the examples of our UConn Biology, UConn Spanish, and computer-aided drafting courses as examples. Finally, Bristol educators value the involvement and commitment of our families, who support their teens in making choices that will lead to college and career success, and we are happy that our strategies to involve families in encouraging students to accept the challenge of our most rigorous courses was also noted within the press release. Within our district, we are certainly proud of the collective efforts of our Board, our administration, our teachers, and most importantly, our students, who have made the goal of meeting our vision to engage in college and career-based coursework, to graduate, leading our vision for them as graduates of Bristol Public Schools. We're now even prouder to be recognized as a district who has promising practices to offer other districts around the state. And for those of you who are interested in reading more, you can follow the Connecticut State Department of Ed on Twitter and Facebook, and use the hashtag #LearnGrowConnecticut. And I'm going to pull it up, just so that you could see where you could find the page. And, Mrs. Everett, that it's off the list, also on your agenda. So if you're interested in reading more of those four district strategies, you can see that Bristol was highlighted on the State Department of Ed.
Awesome, thank you. It's good to hear good news. We now move to the consent agenda, its items eight-one and eight-two. Does anybody wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Does anybody wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda? If not, I think you break your vote on the consent agenda. I would accept the motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion has been made, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second motion, if we properly made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now move to public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment?
No.
We do not have anybody signed up who wishes to make public comment. Is anybody in the audience who wishes to make public comment? You know, and we do take constructive criticism, but we also take positive comments as well. So if some month in the future, you'd like to come up and say something like, "Mrs. Forten said about something great we're doing," we don't mind hearing that as well. So we now move on to deliberated items, and the first item is ten-one, request that the Board of Ed approve the ed specifications for staff. Since Dr. Dieter is getting up, I can get something easy going now.
Good evening, commissioners. I am subbing tonight for Tim Callahan, who is not available. So I understand you've received the ed specifications previously, and tonight, we're merely inserting a language regarding the photovoltaic system. This is a solar system that would be placed on the roof, and the construction would be done by the same contractor at the same time that the roof replacement is happening. The question that came up from one of the commissioners at the subcommittee meeting was with respect to how, approximately how long would we see a payback for that investment? And the figure that was provided to you by Tim Callahan was right, the threshold is about seven years would be when we would break even.
We have to read the specific motion. Let's do a crack, may move. The Bristol Board of Education approves the education specifications for the staff at the school, would replace the project located at the staff at the school, two-twelve Louisiana Avenue, and send to City Council for approval.
Second.
Just a question for Susan Everett. Since it's a resolution, are we doing a will call vote, or is this just a regular motion?
It's just a resolution, it's just a regular motion.
Regular motion, awesome. Anybody have any questions or comments on this project?
I think I expressed my joy last month, I can't.
It's good, no, I agree with you. It's a smart move moving forward, and I hope it continues. Seven years is not a long time. I wasn't aware, I haven't heard that.
It's actually six point eight.
That's fine, it's going to be there for twenty to twenty-five years.
Thirty-year warranty, so.
Okay, I think after all this discussion, I think you ready to vote? So we have a motion on the floor, and we have properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We have athletic safety report, and I believe that is Mr. Casson, who will provide us that information.
Good evening, Dr. Carbone, commissioner. I was asked to present this evening an overview of the protocols and procedures and regulations that the Athletic Department has in place to minimize the risk of injury for student athletes. I hope you find this information beneficial. Medical staffing and precautions, the most recent precautions pertaining to the triple-E virus, which was mentioned earlier this evening. Based on the recommendations of the Bristol Burlington Health Department, Bristol Public Schools have adjusted school-sponsored activities to ensure that outside activities in Bristol end by five-thirty, we continue to monitor this on a daily basis. Each high school has a certified athletic trainer. They provide injury prevention, evaluation, and care, along with expertise in strain and condition, emergency action plans for sports nutrition. Our athletic trainers provide on-field medical coverage at all of our home sporting events. Each athletic trainer, and all of our Bristol Public Schools, have portable AED units. Each athletic trainer has a gator, a motorized vehicle, which allows them to move quickly throughout our campuses in case of emergency. Each high school has a cooling tub, in the event we have a warm weather issue. Ice buckets are kept in proximity of those tubs, and if a student athlete has a heat-related issue, students will be placed at that tub awaiting EMS arrival. All paid volunteer coaches are first aid and CPR and AED trained. All varsity football games and staff are staffed by a doctor, an ambulance, and a certified athletic trainer. All home freshman and JV football games are staffed also by our athletic trainers. Our athletic conference biologs require either an athletic trainer, an ambulance, or a school nurse to be present at every JV or freshman football game. If a school is unable to provide one, the game is turned into a scrimmage, and there are no kickoffs. We administer neurocognitive baseline testing using the IMPACT program for our high school student athletes. This baseline data is used to assist in the monitoring of concussions and the return-to-play protocols. If a student is expected to have some type of concussion or head injury, the CIC and our Bristol Athletic College is, when in doubt, we sit them up. The CIC has concussion management and return-to-play protocols. This document is reviewed and provided to our coaches at all of our preseason coaching meetings. Requirements for all of our coaches in Bristol and throughout the state. Each paid volunteer coach is required to hold a Connecticut coaching certificate, to obtain a state coaching certificate. Coaches who are teachers must complete a three-hour course on concussion management, hold a valid first aid CPR certification. Coaches who are not teachers must also complete a forty-five-hour course, a coaching course. Every five years, all coaches must complete a five-minute refresher course on concussions before renewal of their coaching certificate, and they need to have completed five three-hour coaching lessons. These modules range from topics of fundamentals of coaching, harassment and hazing, nutrition and performance enhancement supplements, CIC rules and regulations, the impact of ethical standards on our youth, coaching female athletes, legal aspects of inter-scholastic coaching, strength and condition, dealing with parents and athletes, full grid awareness for students, athletes, and their parents. In two thousand and fifteen, the state required a course, Football Coaches, that covers current and best practices regarding coaching for football. At the beginning of each sports season, a coaching meeting is held to review all of our protocols and procedures for athletic programs, and coaches receive an update on concussions, D-related issues, and pool safety for our swim things. All coaches must annually review state awareness plans for second cardiac arrest and concussion protocols. A pool safety plan is in place, was developed with the Board of Education and the Bristol Parks and Rec Department. We have two lifetime-duty athletic swim practices and swimming days. Practice and limitations. No team or student athlete is allowed to compete more than six consecutive days without having a day of reps. The CIC has implemented pitching limitations. We're required within twenty-four hours of any baseball game, regardless of our level, to submit to the CIC a pitch count, and depending upon that pitch count will determine how many days of reps that player needs. Equipment and reconditioning. Every year, all of our shoulder pads, lacrosse football, lacrosse helmets and football helmets are sent out for reconditioning. All football helmets are tested and recertified on annual basis, and after ten years, regardless of the condition of those helmets, the helmets are no longer able to be taken out of circulation. There have been a number of new limits pertaining to football. The CIC has adopted new guidelines pertaining to person-to-person contact. There are very strict limitations to how much contact our football teams are allowed to have, week to week, from preseason through the end of the season. As we are currently in season right now, teams are limited to just forty-five minutes of contact through the entire week excluding games. Once we get to Thanksgiving, the Sunday before Thanksgiving, and if your team is fortunate to make it to the playoffs, there is zero contact that is allowed from the Sunday of Thanksgiving through the end of the playoffs. We're also in football, the six-quarter rule, that football players can only play in two different levels. It was rarely what happened, but if you had somebody who was a stellar player, maybe they were a freshman, they played freshman, maybe some JV and some varsity time, it's not allowed, you're only allowed to play in two levels through the course of a week, and you're limited to six quarters. So if you had somebody who was playing some varsity time on a Friday night, and some time on a Saturday morning, you're already allowed six quarters, and a quarter is, equates to six plays. So our teams need to, if you have a student who's playing at both different levels, you need to monitor that very closely. Participation requirements. All student athletes who participate in our athletic programs must have a current physical, which is valid for thirteen months. The state requires concussion and second cardiac arrest education and consent for parents and student athletes. Parents must be informed within twenty-four hours if a student is removed from activity due to a concussion. And two thousand and eighteen, the Athletic Department in Bristol implemented a new online registration platform called Family ID, which expanded to the middle schools this past fall. During, through Family ID, we do electronic signatures for all of our forms, that is student and parent concussion education consent forms, second cardiac arrest, student and parent consent forms, permission to participate, permission to seek medical treatment, the student athlete handbook, and parent-student signature and acknowledging for it. Those are all the forms that are required for student athletes to participate in athletics in Bristol. It's six forms. We currently have about seventeen hundred students at the high school level participating in athletics, six forms times seventeen hundred, we have over ten thousand new forms that we need to monitor, so it's, Family ID has been a great addition to our program. Through Family ID, we also now track our physical dates, our IMPACT testing dates, and there are medical restrictions that we will monitor through Family ID. For those of you who have had children who have played in our program before, you probably use the fully AED form, which is a form that coaches would keep in their medical kit, had pertinent medical information, and had a permission to give treatment in case we're unable to contact a parent. It is all done online through Family ID. Before the season starts, our parents will print off, our coaches will print off a form, they take that form to Family ID and insert it in our medical desk. One of the nice things about Family ID, it also allows us the opportunity to have the Family ID email parents ninety days prior to their physical's expiry, so we can eliminate some of that confusion that has often happened in the past. All coaches are given my cell phone, or instructed to contact me if any student athlete is sent to the hospital if there are any type of unusual incident that occurs at any of our events or our practices. I also file the National Center for Spectator Sports Safety and Security, the NCS four for updates and trainings on sports, safety, and security. Protocols for all of our venues are going to be reviewed this school year and updated. As you can see, the Bristol Athletic Department, our CCC Conference, the CIC, the CIC continue to develop and monitor improved protocols and procedures, and our athletic programs is possible for our student athletes. Other any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Casson.
I'm sorry, I ruined your time.
You didn't ruin my time.
I tried, I tried.
We like that kind of information, thank you.
Any questions? I do have one, actually. For, you said specifically, football matches need to have an athletic trainer available. What about other sports? Do they have to have one available at the, at the?
Yes, we have one at our home sites. Other schools do the same. They're not necessarily required for other sport to have them on site. Obviously, if we have, you know, we may have two or three events going on at a, at one of our schools, we could have a couple soccer games in the front, one in the back, so we need to be on campus, which is the reason why, sort of yearly, we purchased that gator to kind of give them access. But if we have football, they have to be on-site for football.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, appreciate your thorough report. We now move to policy revisions, and I'll make my typical disclaimer that I always make. We may go through these policies in a pretty quick fashion, but it's because we've spent a lot of time in committee deliberating over these policies. Mr. Patton has gone over with his committee, and so, you know, these have been discussed very thoroughly before they get voted on this evening. Our first policy is eleven-one, policy thirteen thirty-one, and Dr. Dieter, you're going to lead us through this process.
Very good. The first policy, thirteen thirty-one, smoke-free environment. This is a policy that's been revised, so we have an existing policy to revisions here where, if you expect the language that is inclusive of new devices that are used in order to congest or inhale whatever you put in those devices. So essentially, the language is inclusive of electronic cigarette liquid and definitions of associated products, so I would encourage the Board to consider this policy.
So where we're going to do this is the chairman of the policy committee will make the motion, someone will second it, and then we'll ask for questions and comments, and then we'll go forward and pass it.
Will the chair add the motion that we approve the revisions, the policy one E three-one, smoke-free environment?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded properly. Any questions or comments? If you're ready to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next policy, five one four one point two one four, student substream. The next policy, five one four one point two one four, Student Sunscreen Use Policy. This is a new policy, and it allows any student six years of age or older to carry any sunscreen during school hours. Previously, they were required at the physician's. It now requires a parent or guardian permission for the student to have that with them. It excludes aerosol sunscreens. The policy also identifies the role of the stat number, the stat number is not to apply sunscreen to students, and it also provides language with a replication of misuse in the event that is brought up.
And this is a new state statute that we're, policy is required to have.
Chair, make a motion that we approve the addition of Policy five one four one point two one four, Student Sunscreen Use.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next policy for consideration is Policy five one four four point four. This policy is physical exercise and discipline of students. This is a revision. This policy, this is actually a mandatory policy by the State Department that this updates our existing policy to include new language in the statute relative to unrestricted play, which allows at the discretion of the school principal, via approval of the superintendent to increase by twenty minutes unrestricted play in a course based with that. It also provides language that indicates that a student cannot be prevented from participating as a form of discipline without the express permission of the parent or guardian.
Just as a little side note on this, when this statute first came up at the legislature, they called it unsupervised play, and so some lobbyists needed to inform them that we don't do unsupervised play in schools, so it became what it became. So go ahead.
Will the chair make a motion that we approve revisions to Policy five one four four point four, Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students?
Second.
Yeah, Kristen is seconded. Motion properly made and seconded. Any questions, governors? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next policy, six one one, is with regard to the school calendar. This is a revision. It allows the board to establish at any time within the school year a firm graduation date known earlier than the one hundredth day that the board adopted the school calendar for the year. This allows us to determine, regardless of snow dates and any other cancellations that come into play, our firm graduation date.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revisions to Policy six one one, School Calendar.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any questions, governors? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item for consideration is a regulation to Policy six one one one, School Calendar. This regulation provides guidelines for the superintendent to administer the policy.
Make a motion that we approve the addition of a regulation to Policy six one one one, School Calendar.
Second.
Motion made and seconded properly. Any comments or questions? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, for tonight, we have a bylaw of the Board of Education. It's bylaw nine two seven zero, Conflict of Interest. This is a revision of an existing bylaw. The purpose is to update the bylaw regarding consideration of employment compensation for a, for a Board of Education member, and it provides with a timeline for when a Board of Education would need to be, submit the designation, and then be considered unemployed by the Board.
Make a motion that we approve revisions to Bylaw nine two seven zero, Conflict of Interest.
Right, second?
Second.
Second. Motion properly made and seconded. Any comments or questions? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we go to new business, and I believe we added an item on the agenda under new business. Commissioner, Commissioner Haverick would love to speak to that.
Yes, shall I make a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education renew its membership with CAE, Medical Association of Lords of Education.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Can I just follow?
If you want.
Thank you, yes. At the past two finance committee meetings, we have spoken about whether or not we would maintain our relationship, our memberships with CAE. Basically, it's close to twenty-three thousand dollars in membership fees. If we are not members of CAE, we're going to spend close to that for some of the services that we are provided by being a member. For instance, E-meeting, policy revisions, policy writing, Day on the Hill, the convention, there are a lot of things that we do through CAE. We came up with, Mrs. Brown came up with two places to transfer funds to cover it. One is in maintenance equipment, and this is, it currently has a sixty thousand dollar budget item for lease-to-own payments. However, we're only going to need forty-nine thousand, four forty, so there's going to be ten thousand there. Then the other one is for professional services in summer school. We finished summer school, we have a remaining twelve thousand, six twenty-three, so we have the money to transfer. So that is why I made this motion, to renew our membership in CAE.
Anybody else wants to speak to the motion?
In addition to the services that Mrs. Baver mentioned, our superintendent, our fairly new still superintendent, has indicated that she thinks there's a great benefit to her, to us, and to the district at large, because included in CAE is a membership in CAPS, which is the similar organization for school superintendents. And I think we as a board, when we voted Dr. Carbone as our superintendent, agreed as a group that we would do what we could to support her in leading the district.
Anything else, anybody wishes to speak to on this vote?
This is something I think has been batted around for a couple of years, and I will admit that through my first two years on the board, I used the policy services quite a bit through CAE. I do have to, no offense to Commissioner Patton, I have to say that Commissioner Taylor brought us through probably ninety-five percent of all the policies that we've had. They even looked at one today, and some of those weren't updated since nineteen ninety-three. So the point I want to make to this is that that policy service is important and can be helpful, but I do think we are ahead of the game on this board, and that we have updated most of our policies. I think we, I wouldn't call that an urgent need at this point. Certainly, E-meeting is, but that's not a thing that I don't think we can come up with. You mentioned Day on the Hill and the convention, I don't think that's widely, although the convention has been widely taken advantage by most of the board members, I'm not sure about Day on the Hill. The last point that I would like to make, this kind of a counterpoint, is that we have put money aside for professional development for Dr. Carbone, and, you know, twenty-three thousand dollars that we can use in other places when we've been overspent for the last four years is something that I think we need to really consider. And I don't know if I'm alone on this, but I would say that I believe our money can be spent better elsewhere.
Anybody else?
I was, I participated in the, in both discussions at the beginning, the first meeting, which was an added agenda item, and at tonight's meeting. And in between those two meetings, I took into consideration a lot of the comments that were made at the first meeting, as well as some additional comments made tonight. I want to reiterate the fact that Dr. Carbone, I'm fully committed to supporting you, but I also, I also value the skills that you bring to our district along with Dr. Dieter. I think we have some great professionals here in our district that I value, and I think you bring a lot to the table. And the policies that we did update in those discussions, we still will need some of the law firms' assistance with some of the more complex policies, and I look forward to continuing working that way. So I do emphasize, we do asking the board to help support us that way. I am in agreement with Jeff about where we stand right now with policies, and we still need to use the law firm services for some of them. I also really thought about what Commissioner O'Brien had to say at the first meeting. He had some, and I don't want to speak for you, but he had some very clear opinions about our CAE membership. And the reason why it was taken off of consideration earlier this year was strictly a budget issue, and the position we were in at that point, you know, what kind of services can we cut in those really hard budget times, and we had, we had full agreement then. And I don't think that the budget issues that brought us to that decision are going to change this year with the projected expectations. So I am, I am conflicted, you know, but I want you to know that regardless, I did value you asking us to consider that for your support, but I think you already bring quite a bit to the table.
Anything else?
My man?
Yes.
Just looking at the numbers that were presented to us by Mrs. Brown, so apparently the membership to CAE is twenty-three thousand, which was looked at as a savings. Now, what she detailed, apparently she went back and looked at those policy services that we would be paying the attorney firm for those, and based on her number, that was eighteen thousand plus three thousand for E-meeting. So we're taking away the twenty-three, but we still have twenty-one on the table. So we're looking at a net savings of approximately two thousand for just the essentials, which would be the policy piece and E-meeting, if those numbers I said are correct. What we then take away are some of the non-essentials, like the onboarding, some of those other updates that they give us. And I can say, as the newest member of the Board of Ed, the CAE website was essential to me, once I got appointed, learning what the expectation was. The reality is that we have an election in a month, we could have a very new board next month, and my worry is, if we take this away and we don't have CAE as a resource, and we have new faces sitting there next year, who's doing it annually? And it's something that we charge a superintendent with. So that's, with that said, I look at the net savings of two thousand for just those essential items, is probably not, not beneficial to the students, the board, or the board in general.
Mr. Gray?
Well, I think everyone knows I'm underwhelmed by this organization, and I'm not persuaded by Mrs. Brown's numbers either. But I wouldn't want to deprive my friend Chris from his Don Quixote-like efforts to persuade them that they are more than a small school organization, nor would I want to deprive my colleagues of the opportunity to go to the CAE convention, which is such an important social event during the year. So the die is cast, and I'm willing to support this challenge.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to add? Any more comments on the motion?
Just make one quick comment. Very quick. I just, a couple of things have been mentioned about the convention, and we're talking about a tight budget. I just want people to realize that when we do go to a convention, we pay for our own hotel. We don't, this is not, our hotel is not on the budget.
Okay, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
So if I might count, it's five to two. If anybody wants to divide it and count, you can count, or we're getting set. Yeah, I'll count.
The chair doesn't vote.
Oh, well, aye, aye, aye.
That's six.
Okay, it's six to two, I can't count. Okay. Okay. So motion passes. We move on to building reports. Memorial Boulevard School, Dr. Dieter.
The Memorial Boulevard Building Committee has been rather active this past month, so I have a list of updates for you. And the first is that, based on abatement and some design considerations, the majority of which have been required by Oscar, which is the Oscar School Construction Grants Review, the cost of the project has increased to sixty-three million dollars. We have met with Oscar, as well as with our architects and other associated firms, and Oscar has agreed, or initially had agreed to reimburse us between sixteen and sixty-three percent, up to that fifty-four point eight, and they've agreed to increase up to the sixty-three million dollar figure. So that information has been shared with the board finance at the city, and as we go on yet again back to the proverbial drawing board on the designs, as soon as we land on that final design, we will engage with the city board finance one more time. As I've mentioned, as a result of these increased costs, the architects have made adjustments to the scope of unit construction, as well as prioritizing the scope of historic preservation versus replacement. Preliminary drawings that we share with the committee can be viewed in the facilities office, as well as, or, excuse me, in the facilities office during regular business hours. I just caution everybody that because we are still in the design phase, that they should be looked at as drafts that we are considering. We do not anticipate any changes to pathways, course offerings, or enrollment based on these changes, so I think that's an important point for us all to have. And additionally, I want to share that we reached out to the Memorial Boulevard five oh one C three theater group, that had done some initial work around the design and renovation of the theater, and we want to share with them some of the proposed changes. And one of the questions that the committee has had, as well as some other stakeholders, is with the changes, what impact will there be on this potentially or not, as a venue for rentals, or potential community, other larger community events? The current seat count has come down about a hundred seats, and we're just trying to, at this point, to still out how much of that is a result of A D A compliance, and how much of that is a result of changing where seats are and how they're laid out. And then lastly, I would like to share with you that our next community session is tentatively scheduled for November twenty-first, and that's where we invite many of the community to come in, to look at our current work, our current drawings, as well as have an opportunity to engage with building committee members, as well as other individuals that are working on projects. While that's happening on November twenty-first, our next scheduled meeting of the building committee is next Thursday, six thirty, in Moonbridge, City of the Board. Do you have any specific questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair? Quick question. So I actually was a little distracted at the beginning of your conversation, I apologize. I heard you say we've gotten approval for sixty-three million dollars from the state. That's their contribution, it's still going to be the same percentage?
Let me clarify. So that's often the area that people get confused on. They have set the limit of project cost at sixty-three million. They've agreed to continue the reimbursement rate that they have reached previously, which typically lands between sixteen and sixty-three percent. Not everything is reimbursed.
Right. And so the city contribution originally, and I'm forgetting the exact number, was seventy-eighteen, and I don't remember the number. So that will potentially push that up a little bit as well, right? Because it's a percentage number.
Correct.
Do you have the numbers, by the way?
The number that I have, that I could share with you is, well, not that I could share with you, the number that I would share with you, I pulled the number on approximately what the reimbursement from the state would be, and that would be thirty-seven point eight.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Dieter. We now go into the executive sessions for the purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation. Hold on, wait a minute, I forgot liaison and information. You're right, I jumped in the gun. My apologies. Since Mr. O'Brien brought it to my attention, I'm going to get to start on that side with City Councilman Kelly, and we're going to combine liaison reporting information together, so we'll start on that side, and let us work our way around. So Commissioner Kelly is passing, so Commissioner O'Brien. So Commissioner Kelly is passing, so Commissioner O'Brien.
Disappointed not to see the enrollment numbers for October 1st as part of the meeting tonight. It's historically been presented during October, and even though it's only one day later, we did have to present these numbers yesterday to the state, so I thought they should have been shared with the board in public tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Robowski?
And I'm curious why Sam was relegated to the corner tonight. I don't know if he did something wrong or...
Too hurried he is, sir.
I'll have something wrong.
Dr. Kelly, can you speak to the numbers?
Sure. So I wasn't banished to the corner. It feels a little bit better to stand than to sit for the meeting at this point. I can, I am ready to present the numbers if you want to bear with me for a few minutes. I can give you the aggregate number and then break them down into sections. At this point in time, Edgewood School total enrollment is 285. Hubble, 410. Green Hill School, 637. Ivy Drive, 374. Mountain View, 345. Southside School, 507. Stafford, 376. West Bristol, 608. Chippens Hill, 762. Green Hill, 6 to 8, 301. Nem's, 480. West Bristol, 68 is 316. Bristol Central, 1,216. Eastern is 1096. So that totals 7,713 students there. We have at the Beck Center, 118. At the BPA, 40. And Outplace, 111. So our grand total is 7,982.
How does that compare to last year?
It's very close to last year. If I gave you the total number, last year was 8,018. This year is 7,982. And I must say, the numbers change almost daily depending on when you pull.
Thank you.
Good. Will you be able to have a complete report, next one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Robowski, anything you want to say? Now you're a couple months into your new teaching position. Any words of wisdom? Class management still go well? Everything's going well?
The kids are still behaving, and so that matters.
Okay. Commissioner Patton?
Be focused on the work, not people, man.
Okay. Commissioner Baver?
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Hens?
Well, I'm liaison to Central, so I will always defer towards students who actually know what's going on.
Commissioner Kelly?
I do not have the liaison report. I am disappointed on a couple of standpoints. One is a positive one. I realize this is my last Board of Ed meeting, and I also want to congratulate Joe on his last Board of Ed meeting, too.
It's not your last Board of Ed meeting, though.
Is it? Well, it's, it's, yeah, it will be in, obviously, that's good. I've learned something every night, so.
So you don't have to be disappointed.
I was thinking this is my last, so then this will be good. Commissioner O'Brien reminded me that I was disappointed that we didn't have an update on our capital improvement and our plan moving forward. As you may recall, we had an operations meeting, I think it was in May, and we were going to hear on what our plans are for the new Memorial Boulevard School and the rest of the schools. So I guess I will hear that in November, so I don't have to be too disappointed.
I'm going to share the liaison report with, we're still, particularly, Commissioner Dubey gives this, it was provided to her, so she asked me to read it. The school year is often an amazing start. Everybody's been practicing their pack pride, and we've held several community meetings. The eighth grade is once again doing a bottle drive that will support Bristol veterans. And this week, they launched the Start with Good Morning program, where middle school students serve as greeters to welcome everyone to school and start the day off in a positive manner. And I have a second one myself, just more informational to share, that there will be the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO in collaboration with the Greater Bristol-Farmington Valley Community Collaborative will team up on October 8th for an ice cream social. The ice cream social will take place at the regularly scheduled Septum meeting as a way to collaborate with families and for the collaborative members to share their resources with those families. There will be somebody from Creative Arts for Developing Minds. They'll have activity for the children that will be attending. And there will be a host of organizations and providers that will have informational tables there for families to browse and ask questions. All the ice cream and food items will be offered free of charge, and they'll obviously make considerations for allergies. But there are a list of the providers that will be at that meeting, and so if you're looking for some more information about our community service offerings, I suggest you attend and have some ice cream. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with no other business to come before us, we will now vote to convene into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.